City of Rockaway Beach City Council Workshop on Wednesday, May 10, 2023 at 4:45 PM will come to order. We'll do our roll call now. We'll go through the councilors one by one. Council President Cheek.
President.
Councillor Franken. Councillor Hayes. Councillor Martine.
Here.
Councillor McGinnis.
Here.
And Mayor McNeely is present. Workshops are intended to allow for preliminary discussions by the city council and staff. Workshops are held to present information to the council so that the council is prepared for upcoming regular meetings. Workshops are subject to Oregon's public meeting law and must be noticed accordingly. No final city council decisions are made during workshops, and the public is encouraged to attend workshops but may not participate unless expressly asked. And let it be noted that Councillor Franken has arrived. All right, John Bowles will begin our council briefing and discussion with a Salmonberry Trail update. The chair recognizes Mr. Bowles.
Thank you very much. Today, I'm going to be speaking to the work that we've been doing over the last month or so and talk the next steps. I would really like to get to the later part of the presentation and zoom out a little bit. We've had some themes emerging from the engagement work that we've been doing and see some real opportunity to integrate with a lot of the planning work that has been done over the last decade and decades. We're getting this, we're doing this stuff a lot here, but we just go through some of the activities. And I'll start with the session. We've had some conversation recently about public engagement and hosted the first public information and listening session on the 26th. I think yes, good news and bad news. Had a smaller crowd of folks here than was expected. And there are a few things of emerging conversation about that. One, hopefully that some of the initial public engagement helped calm some of the potential nerves that there may be about a project of this scale. Another is that we see that there's really broad support for the project. Parking is of course a concern, but the comments that we have gotten online before we created are as much about, is this going to happen and can't happen fast enough as the other side of it? So that's really positive. Another thing that has come up is that this project, as you all know, has been in the air for a decade, at least really more than that. And folks have come through down to certain inflection points. And as I was told earlier, we're in the third or fourth year I talked to about this. And so I think drilling down on our messaging and adding context of the progression of planning is an important next step. I think from the outside, if you're engaged in this, say, every few years, but you don't see a path, it looks like people like to just come and talk about a path. And so we need to sow through that threat of continuity and talk about the progression and the opportunity here. Can you put this in our right of my prep? Your computer. Okay. All right. We're going to take a look at the project map and we'll do a very quick look at it after the last presentation. And then I'll highlight it a bit later on, the areas of focus for the next four to six weeks, looking forward. And again, I wanted to start out on our next, if you're just talking about the public engagement piece, acknowledging the importance, tracing back to the initial engagement, and you hold your emphasis on the importance of accountability and transparency. So we're going to really strengthen outreach to channels that we're using to help make sure that folks know about the upcoming session on May 17th and a future session in June as well. I'm very excited to talk about some of the opportunities that I see beyond the right of way for this project. So I imagine looking at the design parameters within the rail right of way. There's one exercise that very quickly pumps up against constraints and then opens the door to opportunity if you zoom out. So I'd like to introduce some of those themes and opportunities. Quickly, I had a glance here on the board.
Excuse me, could you make it bigger by any chance? Is there a way for you maybe get rid of the side panel and go full screen just to?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the presentation. The presentation button there. Thank you.
That's better.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Techno savvy you.
That's what we call audience participation.
Oops, we broke the rule.
You, is that slower? I'm afraid to make it work at this point, but I can stress that's a copy of this. As soon as I, to show the progression of the project work that we're doing, we are still in the engagement phase and transitioning in a really many sort of stuff on more crystallized hypothesis of a map. So we'll continue the engagement that we're doing and in the navigation that designed them, leading into technical design. And again, there's opportunity to land a few more of those details more specifically. And I'll talk about some of the conversations that I've had with ODOT and others, and we'll continue to explore what is feasible. And then hopefully broaden the conversation beyond the footprint that we are, that we're in right now. Quickly, for community engagement, it's really central piece. I had to meet with Superintendent Obot, how he was pronounced.
Yeah, he just left, but that's probably you you met with.
Yes, yeah, earlier today. And we'll meet with his successor.
Oh, okay.
I think he's, I think he's there currently. And I really wanted to have some time with him because he was involved in Safe Routes to School processes earlier. And so to get his story of knowledge and experience with that. And part of this is integrating the work that's been done with Safe Routes to School on the Salmonberry co-segment report for Rockaway. So in terms of, in terms of the progression of the project, we had a call with ODOT, region two staff that has managed a new path project. And as you guys probably remember, there have been pretty significant delays for this project. The revised timeline that we got from ODOT put the estimated completion of technical design in December 2024. And the deadline for construction funding application is going to be probably August, September 2024. So a huge flag went up there, and in that call, we were able to get a revised timeline that meets the construction funding deadline. Should be staying on track at this point. So that alone was a really significant inflection point. And again, great to be engaged and be having those conversations. Because I think actually in the last presentation, we kind of hypothesized future delays as well. Really emphasized that summer '24 deadline in the interim, we need to be ahead of it. So I'm very glad that we're, and we gave ODOT their medical to us. Saying, hey, this is incredibly important, and a lot of the energy has been focused on meeting this construction funding deadline. So that is still.
Are you going to speak more about ODOT later in your presentation?
I will, and I'm happy to.
Oh, no, I'll wait. I just want to make sure it's coming up again.
So at the same time, I've started engaging the active transportation liaison with ODOT, who was part of the Washington Street enhanced crossing, to surface out what will be feasible or memorable for crossings. And that will be a clarification on the rationale in reducing the crosswalks some years back and also an impetus for more safer and active transportation, the apparent contradiction in that. Long story short, if there are a lot of crossings, the hypothesis is that drivers become more accustomed to them, have less inclined to stop. And with fewer enhanced crossings, they're more meaningful and safer. So the intent, you know, some of what I heard in doing the outreach was that, well, ODOT might be speaking out of both sides, they're not, because they're making traffic go faster on one-on-one. And they're saying, let's have more safe active transportation. There's a rationale for that. I think there's some balancing of the scales that is still happening in their very new guidelines that have come out on what these stations are for downtown areas. So I will be following up with that specific ODOT liaison. And we'll be able to run very specifically this hypothesis that we have, this initial, we're on version seven now of the map. So run that through a matrix that they use on three different layers to see what essentially the policy guidelines say is feasible for crossings and what that looks like. So looking much more deeply into the process, essentially. To tie it together, we're talking about this phase as preliminary design. You know, there will be a technical design phase once we get around these delays. And so the closer we are to a very powerful, all right, we can check the box, this works for Rockaway. And as we vet it preliminarily, where ODOT, it puts the project in a position for a smoother, faster technical design. And most importantly, frames it maybe what is best for Rockaway and lessons for Rockaway.
So just to clarify that, you are looking at, with the feedback that your company's getting from all of the residents here, you're looking at a suggested design for ODOT. ODOT will take that and hopefully incorporate that into their technical design. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, I think we, I think we'll do better than hope.
Okay.
I think they will take that. This is, this would be the ideal scenario there for Rockaway based on what we've heard from the community. And so basically, this engagement process that we're in right now is that we enter a circle of, what works for you guys? We do need to broaden that, but consolidating perspectives, doing more outreach, making sure that voices haven't been heard yet that contribute to it. And then, you know, my job may not only to consolidate and summarize that input, but then be gradually vetting it along the way so that, you know, the, it's one thing to have a what-if, wouldn't it be great, you know, check with Skybridge. Obviously, that would be easier or very useful to you guys. So the closer we get to, this is ideal for Rockaway and is going to pass muster for ODOT and with rail and anticipating our external stakeholders, the better it will be. So really putting those pieces together.
So do you have a projection of how many crosswalks we might ask for right now?
Yes, but I'll have a much better one after one more conversation with ODOT active transportation. And I'm really, I'm genuinely excited about that because, you know, the, one, there are some worksheet frameworks that they have that aren't socialized yet that are guidelines, specifically on what crossings look like in downtown areas. So this is very, it's new, coming out of the office, from the staff. Some of it exists already, but depending on who you talk to and which department, how criteria are emphasized might be very cool. So back to the concentric circle metaphor of it, having a sort of unified perspective from Rockaway, starting with city leadership, this is some of its residents, and having that down. The next step from there is to say, all right, where are there going to be potential barriers for this?
What kind of barriers?
Potential barriers for this. And so I think the next step, excuse me, in the near future phase is the spectacle of a coalition of folks outside of Rockaway who are really buying in and starting to become advocates for the type of path that we're talking about, the specific crossings, the bias towards safe active transportation, pedestrian cycling, safety, local businesses, and things like that.
So again, for clarification, when you say outside of Rockaway, do you mean outside the city or outside of our governing body here?
The next layer of folks who will have influence on what is feasible or what is considered feasible. So for example, it's the idea of how many crosswalks. I think that you would get different answers depending on who you ask in ODOT. And so having folks, particularly with Safe Routes to School and that transportation, adding to the corner, adding to the case that we're building is going to be very, very helpful.
So you mean like the bicyclers and the NADON of each residence and the school district and whatever else?
That's right. So, you know, I think in our last sessions, it was either the last time I presented to you all or in our open session, there was a comment about, you know, ODOT having come through and removed crosswalks. And they're being messaging about, hey, you know, traffic, I'm a traffic engineer. I make traffic efficiently on highway. That is, that's not an ODOT AUCY-like perspective necessarily, right, after some of you's in that domain. So starting the conversation with active transportation at Safe Routes to School is a different point of departure. And as much as we can consolidate that perspective and build support outside of Rockaway, literally and metaphorically, then as we get to this technical design and something is handed to the engineers, if we have a strong case and buy-in already to look at the policy guidelines here, let's look at what they're saying, the safe active transportation, safe routes rather than whatever a guideline might be at a, make the traffic do efficiently on highways.
It sounds to me like what you're saying is that the more partners that we can bring in on this, the more groups and agencies we can work with, the stronger our case will be when we go for funding with ODOT, more funding with ODOT and things like that. Is that?
I think that's certainly part of it. And funding is increasingly part of it. So I'm going to toggle through because I can illustrate it a little bit better on some of the slides. So this is a version seven of the map at this point. Again, this is a draft and will continue to change. And I think at this point, it's more a matter of how this can get better and how we can augment it. Will it get bigger?
We don't want to go there. Technology is not our friend tonight.
Oh, boy.
You got it?
Boy, that was incremental.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't want to labor things we've talked about too much, but again, areas of focus here are the banner, this is a path to Rockaway, not a path through Rockaway. And that means that not only is this a place to explore more of town, we can have connectivity to natural attractions from the boardwalk all the way up to Manhattan each state park and in between, new developments, etc. But there are enhanced, safer crosswalks, and this is going to be an area of focus. Does that mean more crosswalks? Or does it mean fewer better crosswalks? If you were better, where is the absolute best place for the city for them to go in that future thinking way? And that's where this conversation starts to lead.
So there's enhanced crosswalk, we keep saying that, and I'm not sure if there's a specific definition for that. I've seen places where there's flashing lights that go, and that's super helpful. So what is the definition?
Good question, that they are essentially up to dirt code. And so, yeah, so that's all of that. Washington Street is a good example of an enhanced crossing, where you have a safety light. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is a light, but there's more, more measures to make for this. The first next step that I'll take with active transportation liaison is to look at the existing crossings north of Washington and see which of those are or are not considered against or up to current, up to par with the current status of those things.
Seems like that would be most critical, the high school. Seems like that would be most critical, the high school.
Absolutely, and the conversation gets more nuanced there as well. That's at each street, more the terms of this project. We had, and this is actually something that will likely change from this map. The line crossing 101 to the north, there might not be visibility on the curve there, so that might need to come a bit further south.
The highways to the?
So, as you guys know, a lot of the conversations centers around downtown, and what implications for local businesses, we have a pretty small playing field there, the actual liberal right-of-way, and the issue of parking on the issue of how can I make my own path, and also not lose parking. That was just a tease, we'll get it. We talked some about community engagement already. I spent some time here with my family, the weekend before last, to be here on a weekend, and to open to some synthesises, you know, leave my name and number, and just try to, just to see it from that perspective. It was very eventful, watching the break there. It also helped, it also helped me look at the Rockaway experience from a visitor perspective, and the geographic bubble that essentially exists now, the parking in the wayside, the business is right there, and the cross is here. And it's a pretty tight area at this point. So pairing that with the constraints on Miller Street, and the desire to not lose parking, just associated with ROR, and the desire for a path, it's either everybody sort of cement themselves in a position and see what went out on this turf, or take a broader view, and see what else might be feasible and possible for Rockaway. And you guys have a lot of good planning already, so a lot of the seeds of what that could look like are there. It was also interesting, in the session, we had a conversation around what you wrote about Rockaway, and I have gotten maybe a little bit callous to see the vision in conversations, because you often see it, you're done on repeat without maybe enough action behind it. It was an incredibly engaging conversation, and frankly, we could use a lot more, a lot more time for it. And it was really enriching and contributed into the potential for a broader vision of not only this path, but what it means for Rockaway, and how it will shape the future of your town. And I want to emphasize that, there's really masterful behavioral economics around this. We behave in ways that we're incentivized to behave by and large, and that is manifest in many ways, including how we go from working class to the breakfast or lunch. Just in the initial feedback, again, the project enjoys a lot of support, and clarifying where we are in the process of the timeline, not only with this, but from 20th through to here, and how there is a lot of progression, even though nothing is broken down, it's not an official design document. There's some nuance that we need to get into with our messaging. And again, there's more of, let's go already, than, oh gosh, I don't know about this. And quite a bit of appetite for expanding the conversation. It's been, you know, it's been really encouraging to see responses to, from starting with Luke, and in conversations with you all, and with community members, the what-if. I find a lot of openness to that, and that's very encouraging. So over the next six weeks, deeper investigation into crossings with ODOT rail, there are a lot of stakeholders involved here, because we have the ROR tracks. This is for Miller, this is for the city of ROR, and Stia. And giving more clarity on ODOT's internal decision-making process, and who's on first for something like a crossing that has implications for Safe Act of Transportation, you know, highway flow, and rail. We're going to continue to engage the folks at Safe Routes and active transportation to help know how to build a case, no doubt, and look, so we can position for technical design. And then look at, rather than either or, optionality for routing, north of 23rd, would it be possible to use community paths construction coming from one leg, and Safe Routes School is a separate funding pot for an arm that goes to the schools? If there's not enough funding, more probably would be the best. We'll have at least two more information and listening sessions. With the planning commission in the not-too-distant future, or scheduling that. And then we're doing really intentional outreach to business owners who are not downtown. And also, we'll be doing a few pieces of follow-up, latest schools. One, the office that's here in town, and the potential for that for connectivity, the business group there, engaging a student group, and also speaking to the school board, and at a teacher staff meeting as well. So we'll be covering a lot of bases with the school in the near future. The external stakeholder engagement, I've been initially still playing with it, to be frank, because I think consolidating the perspective here, and having a bit of a step forward, is going to be helpful as we start to have people conversations with those other folks. So in terms of what this is like on a map, I've talked about the crossings and getting more clarity there, running this through a couple of filters with ODOT. I'm really curious if that trend of fewer, but safer crossings is going to hold, which I imagine it will. And if there's some, you know, if it ends up being a choice of how many crosses can there be, what are the implications longer term for development, and what does it set off? You know, we do see in places, especially in places you've never been to, right? And you see it with fresh eyes, and you see, gosh, I wonder why somebody did this here? And the implications can be that you have really expansive influence in space, or as we've seen, you know, historically as well, areas just get cut out by major infrastructure. And so, again, certainly back to this project as a piece of active transportation infrastructure, not just a trail, certainly a trail, but a piece of active transportation infrastructure that will affect the trajectory of Rockaway for decades. So some of the themes that emerged from a really good conversation on the 26th were, there's a real love that people have for Rockaway. And very uniquely, folks welcome visitors, and welcome part-time residents or second homeowners. And that's a fairly, that's a fairly unique thing, to have that cohesion. And part of it is the pride in Rockaway, and the school system, and this place that you can raise a family. Also that if you, you know, say live in the valley and have a vacation home here, you're woven into the fabric of the community as part of your identity, and part of an extended family of Rockaway. And in that, even better, that there's a multi-generational aspect of potential for Rockaway. It's a fairly flat place for the Oregon coast, it's fairly accessible as is. And if you imagine this, this path, it is very much ADA accessible and stroller accessible. So the implication is not only that there could be a dramatic reduction in vehicle use from visitors in town, but that it'd be a draw for particularly multi-generational families, which increasingly, there are a lot of us. You know, my mother's in her seventies, I have a two and four-year-old. These types of things really matter. I've said that the path, I don't think, is not a destination driver, as this 2.7-mile project here. As part of the Salmonberry Trail in the future, absolutely. I do think there is potential that with the path and intentional design, with connectivity accessible, connect to these other points, that would be such a friendly place for folks in wheelchairs or with strollers, that it would start to make its own grade in that sense. And that's great, because on the tourism side of things, so much, there is a challenge of residents welcoming visitors, and continuing to welcome them, and very much aligned with ethos of Rockaway that I've heard from folks so far.
Well, before you, can you go back?
Yes.
I particularly like number five. You know, we have this, south of Flamingo Gyms, we have merchants down there, and they tend to hang off the edge, and so anything we can do as part of this project to make them not only feel, but be part of our merchant community would be, I think for all of us here, would be huge for those business owners, those merchants, but for our community, because there's a lot of good stuff down there, but I'm not sure a lot of people, unless they pull off, ever walk down there. So I'm glad to see that. The other comment, you know, human beings are wily creatures, and they tend to see something they want to go to, and they will cross the street wherever they are. And so when I hear fewer crosswalks, I'm not sure what exactly that means, but it does concern me, because there's a lot of people that won't walk down to a crosswalk to cross, and I would hate to see we create a situation where we have all these families and people just, oh, I want to get over to Troxel's, and no, I'm not going to walk up there to cross, I'm going to just go to Troxel's. You know, so, huh? Well, we see that now, too. I mean, and you can't get rid of all of that. Humans are humans, but I hope we think about that in terms of making it easy for people to choose the right way, the safe way, to cross the street. That's my point.
I couldn't agree more, and there are two specific places for this project where there's an issue. One is at 12th Street North, and it is proven true that that is rail, and is not designated as a crosswalk, and the user would have to walk, have to walk south, or the official crossing there, and it would require some actual infrastructure that disincentivizes the crossing on 12th. I completely agree. I mean, and we're all, I mean, we're all guilty, you know, on occasion, right? Just not walk to that. But the implication for Rockaway is big. And so are we not only encouraged, but we drive, drive that behavior, is part of the science. And the other place where I see that being clearly relevant is in the downtown, in the downtown core. The existing crossing on Second, I don't think that will be considered an improved crossing, but I'll run that through direct channels. In which case, would it be feasible to have additional crosswalk, or would it become the in-house station? And we're better, you know, that is not something under any of our sphere of influence, but we can advocate for the best solution. And I can't promise that in 20 years, guidelines won't change to fix on lessons learned from this current.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But the idea, at the point that you're hitting on is, for the benefit of Rockaway businesses, there needs to be east-to-west connectivity, it needs to be safe, and it probably can't be so cumbersome that it takes you 30 minutes to drive after mile three, or a quarter mile or two miles from 23rd to Washington. I want to check in on time here. So you have this, another couple minutes, or do we have a little more?
Probably good to, yeah, wrap it up.
I'll just bump back up to this slide, and the next time in front of you guys, this will be quite a bit more fleshed out, but what I'm suggesting here, proposing, is that zoom out and run the scope, because I don't think it will be feasible to have the pedestrian cycling, the rail, and the parking Miller, but I don't think that that shouldn't, or necessarily has to be, specifically. And truly listening to downtown business owners, and also others, I think there are ways that everyone's sort of interest in this can be accommodated, and in a way that really benefits Rockaway for generations. But we talked about there being a bit of a confined bubble at this point, in terms of flow. And obviously, you've got the parking here, and then we have the storefronts here. There's a tremendous amount of potential for Pacific, which interestingly, Luke pointed out to me earlier today, was initially the thoroughfare for Rockaway, it was the main street. And so, in this cultural shift from before, you know, before cars were as prominent, and 101 was what it was, it makes sense, everything was blocked, closed from the beach. As we shift to cars and cycling, pedestrian, not to mention the fact that the last majority of your visitors are staying within a walking or cycling proximity, there's incredible potential for, rather than really digging in on what are the implications on Miller Street here, what would it look like to have that as multi-use, and to have some optionality in the routing, not only on Miller, and then east through downtown, but expanded here. On this corner is the blue building that has been vacant for quite a while. And if that were to be done, something like an Aker-type attraction, say a rooftop, something like that, and you had a very walk, bike-friendly, potentially one-way, slow traffic with some separation, and you could have, you can accommodate not losing parking, with timing to other planning that work that's been done in the downtown transportation plan, wayfinding, some changes in the wayside, and have essentially, particularly west of 101, a little bit of a kind of mini Mancunia, where it's off 101, and that's part of the benefit that those very U-Oricon towns have. And so I recommend, we'd really like to explore, what it could look like to zoom out a little bit, and what would it look like in 20 years, 40 years, to have a core that is very walking, biking, friendly, but not exclusive to cars and vehicle traffic?
I have some questions, and thank you for this presentation. Every time I watch one of your presentations, things become more clear, so thank you. As someone who has been representing the city in this project for the last six years, and as you and I know, because we, before you signed with the city, we worked together a little bit, I've seen things drag, and drag, and drag for six years, and I really am concerned that this move forward by the deadlines that we're looking at, at June the 24th, and is that still realistic? That's what I want to know, because for six years, Stia, for people who don't know, Salmonberry Trail Agency, that is behind all this, has been saying, Rockaway's going to be first, Rockaway's going to be first. Is it going to happen?
Yes, because.
Because?
It was very clear from the firm that this would not happen, had this proactive engagement not been set in place. So with tending, yes. I would guess at this point, to let our shoulders drop entirely, because we were able to push back from December to June, I would expect that to, you know, jump again. If it is tended to, then I think absolutely. And not only that, but as we expand the conversation, as the Rockaway perspective is consolidated, and have those on the corner, they also become our advocates, so that if there's a pushback that is logistical, and we have this sort of growing coalition of folks saying, hey, no, this is important, guys, this has really got to get done. This is not only a flagging the ground for the Salmonberry Trail, but it's been invested in by Safe Routes and active transportation. The more people we put on our corner to help continue to push it, the more likely it is to happen. Just kind of wrap it up here and say, okay, when you guys get around to it, there's a preliminary design memo. I would expect that what you're seeing would potentially.
So there's different sections of your contract with the city, and and isn't bringing in engagement, partners to engage with this, isn't that part of what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. And I really do appreciate it. I'm, like I said, after six years, my heart beats a little fast, like, is it going to happen? Is it going to happen?
Well, it's not a coincidence this time here, this is for you all.
I really have not much resistance from the businesses on Miller, although, for me, I've been excited about that we might clean that up and make it look presentable, and I have not, and so I'm shocked about the possibility of it going the other way. And I spend a lot of time down there, and I don't see foot traffic and stuff using Pacific, and so... And so I'm worried about a different plan.
But let me clarify. I think that, I think that, I think it's not a question.
Oh, well, your vote?
Yes. I think it's a vote. I think it's both. And I think in the more of this use of Miller, that's a, it's a regardless.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So the, so to the, to the subway map that with the, with the red lines on it, you know, that oval would say Miller and bringing people across 101 to businesses east of 101, or this is saying, yes, that's a good idea. What about the Pacific ball system? What if you had this, you know, this bumble rather than being wayside at one block? What if that is, you know, third south to the wayside over to Pacific and across 101 as well with mixed use on Miller? And then the potential game of either.
For me, I think that's wonderful, but I don't want to take materials from the businesses down there getting what they might need to get foot traffic away. Like if we only get a certain amount of money, you know, and a certain amount of crosswalks and what have you, I want to make sure and move that to everyone and not just to the downtown core.
Completely understood. And also I should be very clear. This is, this is beyond the scope of the ride away. So you're very true. Right. So this is saying, you guys have done a lot of planning. There, there, there are, this path has implications on all the listed pieces of planning and probably some work, some, some vision kind of orientation work that would help tie all of that together. And it wouldn't just be from community paths to, it would be a design for community paths that dovetails into existing planning and umbrella.
So this might be a second phase, the Pacific City or Pacific Street of Miami or Stanning, right?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't. And it wouldn't be necessarily the Salmonberry Trail or community paths, second phase. This is a Rockaway. What is your vision?
Right, because it's on our city street. So we could do it if we wanted to. Yeah.
That's right. Thanks for the question. I didn't think that through. And that is a, it is a, it is a transition.
Okay.
I talked to some residents who are here tonight about having, what Christine was talking about, about having like the downtown quarter, but also having a passageway where people don't have to get off their bikes and go through all of the, the, the traffic of whatever downtown. And Pacific City would certainly, uh, Pacific City, Pacific would, yeah, we could go way down there if we wanted to, would certainly, would certainly fit that bill. And because some of us who live here go downtown every day. So we might just want to get on our bikes and, and ride is, is the point that some residents have made. And thank you for considering that. But again, that was, that's not part of the ride away of the, of the track. And so that's not part of this grant.
That's right. Basically what I'm saying is, given the, given the scope of this project, the actual width of the rail route, like everything that, with the wish list that we're hearing, we should either really buckle down and make some zero sum decisions or zoom out a bit and, you know, you all as leaders incorporating the design at this point allows a lot of option for future development. I encourage you guys. I wish, you know, it wasn't, the public meeting was very important. I would love to take a walk with all of you on Pacific, just to look at it and try to look at it with fresh, you know, beginner eyes rather than you see the lobby. But Pacific is really astounding and the commercial potential is astounding as well.
So we could, we could actually do that. We just have to invite other public, the public to go with us. Yeah.
Great. That's, that's something that I'd love to do virtually, but getting out on the ground is, is the best.
Councillors, any other questions? Mr. Bowles? Thank you, Mr. Bowles. It was a great presentation. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Well, Chief Hesse will now brief us on his fire department mobile equipment plan. The chair recognizes Chief Hesse.
Well, just by PowerPoint. Hey, thank you. So tonight, we've discussed in the past some of our equipment needs. Last fall, I did a very detailed report on why certain vehicles need to be replaced and why some of our other mobile, or I mean, capitalized need to be replaced. So tonight is focused on the actual plan of how or an option, how we accomplish those needs. So, good. Our technical discos. Wait a second, he says. That's good. So I've kind of condensed it down into the priorities.
All right.
Hey, there we go. So kind of condensed this down into the priorities of our mobile plan and our general capital plan. So I'm just going to cut to the chase. I know we're short on time tonight. So the purpose of this plan is, is East for God's. Design a plan that anticipates the current and future capital needs of the fire department. I think sometimes when you, we do plans, we just look at our immediate needs. We want to look at our past, where we're at funding wise and what it's going to take to sustain this program. Plan for expenditures by priority and funding availability. Even if we approve this plan, we still are very conservative financially by nature. We'll make sure it's checked and balanced that we can afford this plan and keep something that's sustainable well into the future. During budget hearings, we were talking about, you know, three years, five years, 10 years. We want to make sure we're good well into the future and not just like doing something because, hey, we have the money right now. That's a state of the problem. So we're going to jump right into this and I'm glad you're sitting down. Some of the numbers are pretty, pretty large. So we're going to start with, with our engine. Our biggest priorities was mobile capital, as we identified five minutes forward. I was going to let councillor Frank and I was going to let you know, I do have a copy of that plan. I'll turn it up for you to show why we have a need to replace certain items. And I'll get that to you. So you're up to speed.
Thank you.
But our biggest priority is replace that pump that we have sitting across the street. It's 20 years old. The technology's outdated and anytime that thing could fail. So this is our absolute highest part in the city. And at the same time, we can add a ladder onto it. So we can actually get up onto our multi-story buildings that currently we don't have that to it. So the cost of that item is a million dollars. It's actually just short. I enveloped it a little bit. It's $994,000. So it's close. Well, I would also add, I know we're short on time, but I would also tell you that we have been very vigilant in the use market for over a year. I'm looking at every, I spend hours, I would say, every month scouring, looking for a good deal. The way the prices are increasing and available in the use market, it's fairly non-existent. Also, I can give you one example. A neighborhood department somewhere in the state has been looking for a used ladder. They ended up paying $800,000 for used 2015 ladder trucks. And it just is ridiculous what they're charging. So this is our highest priority and it's, it's about a million dollars. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we're going to fund this potentially in the future. Our second is to replace four vehicles that currently sit across that street with one that will take care of all four functions that's sitting there. That would be in the 2024, 25 budgeting cycle. So this isn't anything we're looking at this year. It's in the future. And if the funding isn't there, we'll get moved accordingly. But it's to replace four vehicles with one, be more efficient with our, what dollars we do spend. Our third priority is to replace our 1993, it's 30 years old, tender. And it's the lowest priority because it was built right back in the day. It was absolutely built to last and built where it still has some mechanical, you can pull the pump here if you need to, you can open the valves. It doesn't rely on technology in the modern sense. As we all know, if we have a cell phone or anything else, in three years, it's outdated. And that's the same thing with fire equipment. Unfortunately, it has a higher price than that. So these are the three, three mobile equipment that we actually really need. Other than that, everything we have is like our side-by-sides are 20 and 22, our command vehicles, 2020. So our, most of our stuff has been modernized. These are the three items that need to be modernized by priority. I just, you can, we can ask a question. Oh, go ahead.
I certainly conceptually like the idea of four vehicles into one. It's a lower total cost of ownership, I assume. Four vehicles can go to four different places. One vehicle familiar one place. Does that impact your ability?
Great question.
To respond?
To respond to, with our responses, we often respond with five posts less. And that has the seating ability to take care of everybody and meet those needs.
Okay.
So we, instead of having, we take one for a brush fire and you put it back in the house. And then if it's a rescue, take this one. We can combine all those for the call. We barely.
I trust you. I just, you know, four to one scared me a little bit. Yeah.
Right. And I juice myself. But we very rarely double up where we have a need for the, two of those at one time.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that is a great question.
Thank you.
We're just trying to be more efficient wherever we can. For every dollar we have. I mean, dollars are definitely few and far between. So we're trying to be efficient with that. Right?
Excellent question.
Absolutely.
What happens to the used equipment should they be replaced?
We'll try to sell them and get the top dollar again for them. But that pumpers, that it takes a million dollars to replace. If you replace it with an engine, it's about $700,000. But that pump is worth $10,000 to $20,000. So the value is way skewed on something that's that non-compliant. Nobody's, it's a very limited market. Yeah. That's why you try to keep up on replacements. So when you sell it 15 years, it still has a pretty high value. And that's a cycle. Eventually, I hope we're going to be able to get it in a proper replacement. But we did plan for the future for a lot of years. So we're trying to, lack of better word, paying the price for it a little bit now. We'll work through it as a, as a council, not department. I'm sure we have no doubt about it. So there's a lot of different options for purchasing. It used to be you had to write a check right away when you wanted to buy something. Right now you have, it's basically buying a car, you have a payment option. There's very good leasing rates as far as interest and you can finance it up to 15 years. I wouldn't recommend that, you know. We have, have resources, a lot of them. But we'll talk about that when we actually get to the purchasing, if we do it. At least options, a good option. The way these things are increasing in value, it's, last year, that same vehicle I showed you to replace the engine was $840,000. It's gone to $160,000 a year and a half. So total project cost here is $1.9 million. That's a lot, not anywhere you're at. Like I said, we did it by priority just because, you know, if this doesn't work out, we're going to have to bear more than two. We'll purchase as funding becomes available. We were very fortunate enough in this year's proposed budget, we have set a lot of money aside. We set $375,000 aside for capital purchases. $300,000 of it being the mobile equipment plan. But I will tell you, if we do purchase like that ladder truck, we probably won't see it for two years. And there'll be no payments in that interim.
That's the lead done to get one.
I just talked to somebody at the Oregon Fire Tooth Conference and they're talking build times are 700 days. And they're getting longer as time goes on.
You may have this on another slide coming up, but considering the critical situation that we're in with that truck, is there a plan to, to go ahead and purchase one?
We have, we've backed a ladder truck out. You mean that or?
No, I mean, like, is there a plan to get them on and purchase one?
Oh, yeah. If, if, if that thing broke today, is that what you're saying? Or just buy a new one?
And, and replace, yeah, buy a new, I mean.
Buy a used one to keep it.
No, buy a new one?
Yes.
Because if it takes two years, then that, then we could still use this one for that two years.
And that's the plan right now is use it until it becomes a problem.
But then when it's no longer usable and we would then still need two more years, would we be without a truck for two years?
Yes. For the easy, we can buy something used cheap to get by, but it's not the proper way to.
So that's what I.
Yeah. And I think we're running around the same tree.
Yeah. So, so couldn't we just, couldn't the fire department just buy one now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That would be, that would be the ideal situation, buy one now and have it being built. We try to, to get this one to make it the two years till we get a new one. Yes.
I think that's what he's trying to sell.
Yeah.
I thought he tried to sell us on.
That's what I'm trying to sell you on track or propose. I like the word propose back. Sounds a little better. But we, so we have $300,000 in this year's budget for mobile equipment. Just trying to find the best way to get that.
One of the, one of the trainings that we went to was by Business Oregon. I don't know if you've investigated anything like that, but they have lots of emergency grant programs that go with financing around if you, I don't know if you've looked at that, but I would add that to your list.
We absolutely are vigilant in all the grant opportunities and scour that on a weekly basis to see what's out there. You know, like the air packs last year, we already get $188,000. We didn't have to use these capital funds to purchase something. We've got another grant out right now for some staffing. We just, wherever we can, we're attempting anything we can, but they're getting so competitive. Let them know it's very tough.
So that entity is called Business Oregon. So I don't know if you're familiar with that.
I don't think I've researched that.
They tried to sell us one of the trainings that we went to. He talked about, I mean, he listed off a ton of money and financing that they wanted to sell for equipment and things, but also grants that went for things that might not work very much longer.
And I appreciate that. I will absolutely look into it. And for constraints of time, we're going to go through the mobile, the, just the capital equipment needs. I gave you a few, two cases of pictures just to let you kind of get an idea what some of our capitalized items are, you know, maybe everything from our Emily hoses, air packs, which were good for 15 years. Thankfully, right now we've got the freezing room. Whether it be personal protective equipment, our jaws of life, our Leepus, our heart monitors. To cut to the chase, we have, this is hard to read, but our priorities is the capital equipment, tire replacement, thermal imaging cameras, our structural PPE, building maintenance, radio pagers, heart monitor, hose storage, a store shed outside for a burn container. And that, those projects together are $200,000. That didn't even list all our capitalized items. We have about $600,000 worth of capitalized items over there that are hoses or the lights. So we have $75,000 this year. For example, we will take priority. Our biggest priority is actually tire replacement. We have tires that are 30 years old over there that are cracked and your brakes need replaced. But we will use the funds to get the most efficient use of them as we can to purchase those lights. Obviously, we're not going to even do half our wish list. So all these items are needed to upgrade or replacement. We do get good donations. That always helps. We'll, again, priority and funding availability will be the driver behind what we purchase. We're not here just going to just start buying stuff that you say, yep, that only needs to be replaced. It does. But we will definitely do it on priority. And we have $75,000. Going conclusion, sorry, this isn't vigorization. I, I know and I could have made the font a little bigger. But with this for the annual budgeting process each year, it's adaptable both to change need and financial availability of resources. So this changes, as budget changes, we're not so sustainable through the next couple of years with changes accordingly. But it's to increase our safety and like I say, maintain just the responsibility. Grant funding to use wherever. Any questions?
I just have, I just have a request. Could you forward that PowerPoint to city council and the mayor?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'll also send the equipment part why we're in this mode. I'll put both those together and send them together. DS and Rafferty back for views. But that is our plan, just trying to get by and make sure we're safe and in daycare assistance.
Thank you.
That's a short version.
Thank you, Chief Hesse.
Can I add to that a little bit, Mayor?
Sure.
Just so that the council are aware, so at the next meeting, the fire tooth in your pocket will have an actual purchase plan, replacement plan for these items. And And uh if it's approved, then staff will know, okay, that's that's the priority now. And so for things like uh the big items, the mobile equipment items, there's no dedicated funding the city has at this point to make that purchase. Um but if the council directs us to that, is that, is that being a priority? Then that's what we'll start looking at. How are we going to fund uh a million dollar fire truck? And that'll have to be figured out uh before we make any moves, make any purchases. But we want to know that that's, that's what you all want us to work on.
Okay.
Because it's it's a big ticket item.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if there's any other information you need, let our chief know and he can, he can put that in the plan or we'll give you that information. So you all can make that, make that decision.
Thank you.
You wanted to, um, can I make a comment about that? I wonder about the replacement of the second vehicle we talked about before the first one. So just as a business plan or because it seems like that's one set of tires instead of four sets of tires. It almost seems like it, right, a good business wise, and so I'll just throw that out there.
I I think he was, I think he was giving us a a priority of of the uh highest needs priority. And the big, and the big truck is the highest needs priority. Yeah.
We good? All right. Thank you. All right. Uh City Manager Shepherd will take us through a short-term rental license fee review. Take it away.
And I think you have at least, at least time to begin our discussion on this.
Yeah, we won't be getting through our agenda tonight.
I'm gonna excuse myself for this.
All right, so in your packet, you've got a draft resolution uh whose purpose is to uh uh raise the annual license fee for short-term rentals from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. This was an issue raised at our second budget committee meeting as we talked about uh revenue for the city and and general regulations of the short-term rental industry here in Rockaway Beach. Um and so I just kind of wanted to frame the conversation a little bit to the council uh before you all start the discussion. Uh you know, our our TRT tax, our tax of the the short-term rentals of revenue is a great, great revenue source for the city. Um it does a great job of funding tour, facility projects, uh does a great job of advertising for the city to bring more tourists to keep them here. Um and that that tax um also funds a lot of the services the city provides. Um but as far as funding regulating the short-term rental industry through our ordinance, uh you know, the the resources to do that have to come from its license. So uh you know, the real question is, does the council want the city and its staff to uh increase how it regulates or monitors the short-term rental industry in Rockaway Beach? If you do, we need more resources to do that. So things to think about are, um you know, do we want to uh have inspections on the exterior of these houses? Do we want to look at, do they have department, do they have department service? Are the uh signs in regard, do they have contact information? Uh do you want somebody focused on doing that? Do you want somebody focused on uh working with the Department of Revenue and the Department of Justice to to look at the unregulated rentals in Rockaway and uh make sure that they are licensed and are paying their taxes, paying their taxes that they owe us? Um you know, it takes resources to do all that. And so uh really, it's a question of resources. Uh do you want the resources to increase uh how we manage to rent rentals? Or are you all okay with with what we're doing now? That's, that's the real question.
Um I already had my name stomped in the back.
Counselor Franken.
Thank you. Um remind me again how many short-term rentals are currently on the books?
There are about four hundred and fifteen, I believe.
Over there?
Yeah.
Um I did some research this week, so this is currently updated as of yesterday. I called some of the cities on the North Coast. I looked online at the fee structures and the applications they have posted for short-term rentals. And just so everyone knows, and I did it, I sent it to Luke. I didn't send it out because I wasn't sure where, if it was gonna end up in a vote, but I'll be glad to send it out. Uh because I realized now we're not voting tonight. Uh but Astoria charges five hundred dollars. Uh Seaside, five hundred and fifty, Cannon Beach, five hundred, Manzanita, eight hundred and fifty. And so that was, you know, just going down through. And that's a little different than what the chart is that that Luke included in here. But um so it would not be out of line with cities around us, I will just say that. And none of the cities prorated it, like if it's a small owner-occupied uh short-term rental or if it's a commercial hotel or anything. They didn't distinguish between that. But I wanted people to just know that looking at the cities on the North Coast, five hundred dollars is sort of a base rate, and then it goes up. Manzanita just raised theirs to eight hundred and fifty. Plus, they charge a three hundred and fifty dollar inspection fee on top of it. Uh and that actually goes into effect August of this year. Right now, I think there's like six hundred and fifty or something, and they're raising it up. But anyway, I just wanted to share that information, and I will send this chart out. But I I didn't, I didn't know if we were gonna, you know, have a discussion leading to a vote, so I didn't send it.
She said Seaside, which isn't on here. It was five hundred.
Yeah, Seaside actually has two scales, once four seventy-five and once five fifty. They charge a forty dollar inspection, inspection fee. They also charge four hundred and thirty dollars for the, uh I mean, six hundred and seven, wait, I look the wrong thing. Four hundred and thirty dollars for their planning director to review the application in addition to the fee. So they just, they keep adding until it gets really expensive.
And he said Cannon Beach is not two hundred, it's five hundred?
Five hundred. It's what they told me when I called them. Plus, they, their, their business, like, they have a business license fee that all of the places have to take out a business license, and the business licenses for Cannon Beach are two hundred dollars. Plus, then they tack on more money based on the employees. So so we would still be at the the low end compared to cities around us if it, I'm just throwing this information out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In comparison to?
To North Coast.
Yes.
Uh tourist towns like us. Yeah.
Actually, we're behind the scale then.
Correct.
I wouldn't say behind, oh, behind right now. Yeah, yeah.
The proposed five hundred dollars puts us.
At the low end.
At the low end.
Still the low end. Yeah.
So and then on the other side of it, what's, what's the impact to current SDRs, meaning aside from the obvious financial impact? So does this lessen the ability for folks to have short-term rentals in any way?
No, and and I didn't mean to interrupt you. Uh but yeah, the idea is, there's no new regulations. You just want to enforce what we've proposed at this point.
So a couple of, a couple of ways to look at this. Um one is, um we're forecasting two point four million dollars in TRT taxes next year. That represents twenty-four million dollars in rental revenue that that these businesses are taking by being in our community. That needs to be well-regulated. That's a huge industry operating within our city limits when you think about how much revenue is being extracted. So I I personally believe we need to make sure they're living up to our current uh ordinance and that we inspect. Um I can tell you, there is a, there is a short-term rental that has a license that's being used for storage. It's not inhabitable. So they took out a license and they're not renting it out, and we're not receiving any TRT for it. It's being used as storage. Uh if we had inspection, that wouldn't have happened, just as an example of the value of of inspection. Um it will, I I do agree that increasing the fee will disproportionately affect some folks who maybe rent their unit out on the low end. But I did go out to Vicasa. There were thirteen pages of Rockaway Beach rental properties on that site. I just took the first page and the average nightly rental was two hundred and fifty-three dollars. So on average, it's one additional night's rental to cover the additional two hundred and fifty dollars. So um given that, I am all in for raising the 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 fee to to five hundred dollars.
To what you just said about a place having a license but not being used. Uh so in addition on my chart, I've also been adding in information about other towns' short-term rental ordinances. And we have the few fewest ordinance rules of any of the towns that I've been looking at. And for instance, Nahalem, which does have a fee of six hundred and twenty-five dollars to apply, also has a rule that each a short-term rental must generate five thousand dollars in taxable rent or they're not, they don't get their license renewed the next year. In other words, they don't allow it to sit vacant. So 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 there's just a lot of things to consider, and obviously, we're not gonna vote on it tonight. But I wanted people to have this comparison information.
We're, we're, we have been uh kind of uh behind the times with our rent rates, way behind the times. And I definitely think it should be reevaluated.
Yes, and I agree, and I think that's why there's some angst among residents in the community about the growing number of short-term rentals.
I have three, there are three short-term rentals on our block. Our block has five and a half houses. The half is the corner one, which is a rental. So it's, we're half and half on the street I live on. Granted, it's a small street, but all summer long, we have visitors going up and down our gravel street. And it, it makes a mess. They're loud. They, some have parties, and it's an inconvenience to the residents. And I can understand the complaints that we have as I'm experiencing them myself personally. So I don't think there's anything bad about having an ordinance officer. And this will help fund an ordinance officer. So we get some control on what's going on. Right now, it's very willy-nilly, and everybody can do what they want to do where they're home.
Is our next step, Luke, to get some, actually, in the ordinance draft language and put it on the agenda for another month? For a city council meeting?
Yeah, um yeah, the reason this kind of leapfrogged some of the other agenda items we've been working on uh for the simple fact that uh the renewal period for our SDR licenses is in July. So it's nice to have a meeting and a discussion and a workshop followed by a resolution. And so we can pass it, it will take effect in July uh at the next renewal cycle. So that's, that's why we're looking at it so quickly.
So the, one more question. The um ordinance officer position is who would enforce these things if funded?
Yeah, it'll be um that and and many other staff members. There's, there's, there's a lot that goes on for taking the permits and inspections and working with homeowners and taking the license and uh working to get the unlicensed rentals in line. So it's shared by almost everybody who works in the office here, who even though it works actually uh on for rentals. Just, it's a complicated.
In the interest of time, I'm going to suggest, and I don't think it has to be a motion because we don't actually vote on anything in a workshop. But I'm gonna suggest that we bring the the meeting rules and procedures up next workshop because we want to do a really thorough job with it, and we have like two minutes, I think.
Sure. Yes, I, so yes, I I would agree. So um um if not, given this, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'm so moved.
Second, yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Uh we'll record the council's vote. Uh Council President Chief?
Yes.
Uh Council Franklin?
Yes.
Franken, not Franklin. Uh Counselor Hayes, uh she recused herself. Uh Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
Uh we are adjourned at five fifty-nine on Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three. It takes ten to fifteen minutes to switch all our technology around. So we will reconvene for the council meeting uh at six fifteen.